All right, good afternoon, everybody. Harney County Court Work Session on RV use and encampment residency. As we had asked Planning Director, Mr.
I'm new around here.
To prepare a report for us. It's right there in front of me, too, but.
You said you were bad with names.
Yeah. I will, I will take that one. So, anyway. The question was posed on what the current statutes and ordinance are on the use of RVs for residencies. And again, like I said, I had asked Planning Department Director Brandon McMullin to do some research on this and get back to us, prepared a very good report. Thank you, sir, for that. I think it pretty much spells it out as what by statute we can do and what we can't do. So, other than that, if you just wanna, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you and let you take it.
So, building on from the county court meeting where this was a topic of discussion, the information that the judge referring to is the same information that I had with me for that meeting as well. So, what I can do is kind of give a high-level overview of what this is. The context of the meeting last time in research was about residing RVs and what our local code had, what maybe the history of it was, and then what a recent Senate bill did for opportunities potentially for additional situations where RVs could be used temporarily or permanently. And so, that's what this packet of information was. And I felt it pretty much covered the bases of the work session we'd need to revolve around as well. So, when you look at this, you'll see that that same date is on here, it's from April. But I'll skip over the history of what we have and just kind of glean over or just state simply what we have and then what the state has in addition to this through that Senate bill, which is now part of revised statute. And then maybe some thoughts from some other counties that I've reached out to and then see where the conversation goes. When you make your way through, again, a good part of that letter from April was talking about the history of what we have. So, what we have is a stipulation as it relates to both residing in and permitting, if you will, for recreational vehicles in mass. So, regardless of zone. So, it doesn't, and that'll come into play maybe against what other counties are doing, where they do talk about where maybe this could be allowed and that. Maybe not so much in other zones or other areas. Quite put simply, you've got a line in our, you've got a code provision in our ordinance that stipulates that RVs are not to be permanently resided in. And that's not paraphrasing, that's it, that's the language. When it comes to how long you can stay in an RV, that amount of time is 30 days per our local code. It doesn't, there isn't a parameter of 30 days in a calendar year over a six-month period of time. It's just 30 days. So, when I, in practice, if you will, when I talk to folks who are communicating or asking, "Hey, can I have my RV out on my property? What can I do? What are my options?" I'll, I'll give them the rundown of what we have in code and say, "Well, your other restrictions as far as being in it, residing in it." But we do have avenues if, if this is what you need. So, for instance, if there's a medical hardship, regardless of zone. So, let's say you've got a family member and you need to have them close for medical care. We can get, we can move folks through a conditionally used review process, which enables them to be able to have somebody temporarily on their property in an RV or even a manufactured home, which is actually more common, for a period of time that helps folks get through that scenario. That's in state statute and local code. Once the hardship is over, then the RV would exit or the manufactured home would exit. We actually give folks the opportunity, if they have two manufactured homes, if you will, which one they want to keep. It doesn't, you know, there's, I don't know how neat that is. I just thought that was a good amount of flexibility to have if you had one new way that wasn't in the other direction. RVs can also be used, and this is under Article 9 of our zoning ordinance, in the building from this section. RVs can also be temporarily inhabited during the time of construction for your home. So, this was put in in 2009 when we did the code then. This allows folks to have an active building permit and have all their zoning authorizations in place who need a place to stay while they're building their place. And so, other communities have this as well. We felt it was necessary back then, and it's proved helpful many times over the years that folks have that place where they can stay, not only if they're building it, but temporarily while the home's going on, you know? Other than that, what you're gonna find are opportunities more for RVs to be inhabited in an RV park, which is a location that's most likely gonna be in an urban area or a campground that is dedicated for that type of use and has the facilities to account for something like that. State statute was recently amended, and I've got, I believe I've got in this paperwork Senate Bill 1013, which has been codified. And it talks about counties may allow an owner of a lot or parcel in a rural area to cite on property one recreational vehicle that is used for residential purposes and is subject to a residential rental agreement. That may allow for counties to provide more opportunities if there is a desire to account for housing through RVs in what are called what they term rural area. Rural area is defined in this context as areas that are non-resourced. So, it's gonna be your residential zones and not within city limits. So, it's gonna be stuff that's gonna be in our R1 zones or inside our UGBs, which we have jurisdiction over. So, then there's a, there are counties that have accounted for this particular type of allowance. Deschutes County is one of them. I've got a sample of their code with me if you'd like to see it. I was able to reach out to them a little bit. I do need, I do have some follow-up questions for them as far as how they implement that, but I imagine if the county court was interested in pursuing some kind of avenue like that, we could dive further into how their code provisions work and under what context.
Under that provision, an RV is really being used more as an ADU.
Yes, yeah. Where you would have a, in Deschutes County actually allows for, from what I can tell, again, I need to do a little bit deeper dive, but Deschutes County would even, in that context, you would have a lot where there's already an established single-family home. And the RV would act in that, in essence, as an ADU, as the judge said. It's just another home that could be utilized. And there are stipulations that are tied to that through state statute, like a rental agreement, for instance, and some idea that there's gonna be some care that can be provided, like an ADU would, you know, that would tie that up in a more permanent sense, in a more formal sense.
But no actual permitting for the RV to stand alone on a piece of property, drill a well, septic, and have connection to power, from what I've read from your packet is, there's no permitting for any of that.
Not in Harney County. Deschutes, I've, and I can jump ahead to this a little bit.
Are you wanting to define ADU?
ADU, yeah.
Accessory dwelling unit?
That's, yeah.
Mother-in-law suite in the backyard.
Yeah. A bedroom?
Yeah.
An extra bedroom?
Yeah.
Actually.
Bunk house.
To provide a little bit of, for sure, to provide a little bit of context. ADUs are full-blown homes. They can be. Like a mother-in-law cottage or, say, a guesthouse can be something that is different. And we do provide and define an opportunity for a guesthouse in our code. It's limited if you're interested. It needs to be site-built. It can't be an RV, and it can't be a manufactured home. So, it needs to be site-built. It can't be any larger than 1,000 square foot, and it can't have a whole kitchen in it, which means you're limited. You can't have 220 wiring, for instance, for a range or something like that. But that isn't considered an additional dwelling unit, however. And so, you know, they aren't meant to be rented out or anything like that. It's like a spare bedroom that's external from the house. Yeah, like a guesthouse is what it is.
Bullshit.
Yeah, ADUs are not defined in our code and.
All right, please, please don't.
ADUs are not defined in our code. They are through statute, of course. And in some communities of a certain population are in a spot where they need to react to that based on housing needs and analysis through the state level, through the legislation, the legislative level. But Harney County, given its population, isn't required to address that stuff. Is it something that we could address in the future? For sure, if we felt so compelled. But anyhow, that's where we kind of land with some of this. We have local provisions that provide restrictions, but some avenues to help folks out in RV situations. And it's fairly restrictive in others, such as resource lands. Resource lands are your forest in your EFU or your farmlands. I haven't come across the county yet that allows RVs to be resided in permanently on any EFU ground. Unitilla County has mixed forest and recreational use zones that allow for permanent residents in RVs, like hunting scenarios and recreational scenarios. So, that could be something to explore in a recreational sense down the road, potentially.
I think as the topic was put forth to the court, it was more of a solution to a shortage of housing and affordable housing for those who can't afford to get into the traditional model, housing model. But what I'm seeing here, and unless, correct me if I'm wrong, are there, excuse me, are there any avenues for the use of RVs if somebody owns a piece of property? I mean, I don't, I'm not seeing it unless we can change an ordinance to suit it or to allow it. But I'm not seeing any avenue for if somebody owns a five-acre plot of land and wants to take their fifth wheel out there and set it up and live in it as a permanent residence.
We do not have that ability in code right now. I'm not, I can't find anything in statute under ORS 215, which is the guiding principle, that it is the foundation for land use as it relates to both real lands or EFU lands. Okay, not to get too technical, but that's where you would see this addressed. If there was an allowable opportunity for RVs to be resided in, in any kind of permanent sense, it would be there, and it's not there.
It doesn't disallow it?
No, it doesn't say, well, so 215 rarely has anything. Land use code is interesting. It doesn't say, "This isn't allowed." It's more like, "These are the things that can be allowed." And if, when it's silent on it, typically, it's not something that isn't allowed use on EFU ground.
I'd just like to know if it's clearly stated
Right.
that you can.
Yeah, so I'll give you an example. Subdivisions are not allowed on EFU ground. For some, that may be an obvious statement. But it's not specified in ORS 215 that subdivisions are not allowed. So.
I mean, is it because it's implied or because it's somewhere else?
It's a good question, but typically, it's because it's, that's the way the statute is built. So, you have your, you do have some code references in there, like commercial activities in conjunction with agriculture that are broad enough to encapsulate different types of potential uses that could be conditionally allowed in EFU grounds. So, that's how the statute accomplishes it in ways that maybe opens it up for different types of commercial uses that could make sense on EFU ground, like a slaughter facility, for instance. That would fall under a commercial activity with, in conjunction with agriculture, but it's not called out specifically under ORS 215.
I wonder if, a little away from what you do, if the governor and the homeless programs are starting to address any of this. You know, in their thinking of, you know, we can't build enough homes fast enough. So, are there things that should be relaxed or changed that will help people?
Well, so, when you look at 197, 493, I think that's where the Senate bill was permanently codified. And it provides the layout for how, not only under a natural disaster, a county could accommodate this, but in our more urban areas, if you will, there could be an ADU type of assistance or opportunity there, right? It doesn't provide for anything on our resource zones. So, EFU enforced use would not be, is not called out here. But it does provide an avenue for a county to take advantage of this if we felt so compelled.
I think in your documentation here, it specifically stated within URA or URG, urban, huge, urban growth boundary, UGB.
What did you guys do to him this morning?
So, it had to be within that, more rural residential zoned areas, right?
Yeah. So, a county may allow for an owner of a lot in a rural area to cite on a property one recreational vehicle that is used for residential purposes. I think I've got rural area as defined by Senate Bill 1013 is an area zone for rural residential use as defined under statute 215, or land that is within the urban growth boundary of a metropolitan service district, but not within the jurisdiction of any city and zone for residential use. So, basically, it's a rural residential zone. So, if the cities want to take advantage of that, I'm sure they have their own little cutout of statute that they can utilize for them. So, we're talking our rural residential zones is where this would fit. Our rural residential zones, of course, you're gonna see within our UGBs. But we do have some other areas that are designated rural residential, you know, and they're typically close to town, you know? The Jalen addition, if you will, that is a rural residential zone. The, I'm trying to think of others that are outside our UGB. If you go up Stan Cliff, you've got some rural residential property up there. Radar Lane has rural residential up there. So, there are other places where rural residential.
And they had to apply to how it designated as rural residential. There is like a process there.
Correct, those are what are called exception areas. They go through an entire zoning designation change and a comprehensive plan in order to allow that to happen.
Question. If people have an RV and they're temporarily inhabiting it during the building of whatever they're building, what's the longest period of time someone's been building whatever they were building? I mean, has someone been able to do it for years, many, many years? I mean, I'm just curious, what does temporary mean?
Well, I can tell you what the county court wanted at the time.
And this was what time period?
This is.
Oh, nine?
Oh, nine, so. Grasty, Dan, and drink water. I've been doing this a little bit. They wanted flexibility in that. So, they did not put a specific amount of time that one could stay in there. Other counties do that. Unitilla, for instance, they allow that type of thing to only be six months. I, yeah, built real fast, especially in Harney County where our building season is like this. I think the intent was, as long as they have, and I remember this part because there was some back and forth with the county court at the time. They wanted to allow someone the flexibility to, even if they started in the fall, they could be, as long as their structural permit was valid and they were making progress, they can come back at this again in the spring, finish up if they needed to. Some people, when they're building their own place and they don't have contractors, they're just doing it themselves, it takes them a little bit. And that's why the code doesn't have a stipulation for six months or eight months or whatever the timeframe could be.
Maybe go back to Cheryl and just ask what thoughts you have at this time here in this discussion and what brought you originally to bring this up to us.
Okay, my original bringing it up was because of that letter, which, you know, I presented it as kind of a redacting letter, but. And then after that, I know how many, I mean, one example was that we went and skirted a trailer, a fifth-wheel trailer. We skirted it, we flung it, we did all these things to it, not realizing we were breaking a rule. You know, our business did that, and I was like, oh, my goodness. And then I started looking around and how many people are living in RVs in this county? And it concerns me when I'm a property owner and I understand the LCDC and all of that stuff, you know, that there's other people making rules about what I do on my property. And so, it hit me wrong, you know? I mean, that's just me. We have several trailers that when the grandkids come for the summer, they get to stay in a trailer and camp out at grandma and grandpa's. But according to what I'm hearing, if somebody complains, I'm gonna be in trouble because they're kind of, they're older now and they're cooking in there and they're, you know, they're doing their own thing as teenagers.
So, so they're just staying there?
Yeah.
Like from time to time?
Sometimes for the whole summer, sometimes maybe six months. You know, they're older. We don't, but it came to my attention, you know? My other question that still goes through my mind is, if that property has a non-farm dwelling, how does that change that whole statute thing or whatever you guys call it, you know? Like my house, I'm in that, I'm in the exclusive farm use, you know? But my, it's a non-farm dwelling. So, if this trailer is in that section of the property, you know, I'm not putting it out on the 200 acres away, you know? You know, I don't, I just, and people, I know of one couple, thank goodness, they have a rental here in Burns that they can stay in. They've been building their house for four years because of contractors not being able to, you know? And, you know, I mean, I'm seeing that all the time. I'm seeing people living in trailers in this county, and they have been for 10, 20 years. And they don't own the property, but they're renting from them, you know? I mean, just, I don't like seeing our people getting punished. Housing is really tough right now. I guess that's the biggest thing, finding places for people to stay. Even modular homes, I couldn't, a few years ago, I couldn't afford that, but I might have had a trailer. I did have a trailer, and I did live in my trailer, you know what I mean? I, even the RV parks here in town, they've gotten so horribly expensive for people. So, I, there's a homeless problem, and there's a community problem, and there's a county problem. And I don't know what other counties are doing, but when people are getting letters saying they're gonna be cited for breaking a rule and the other ones are being ignored, that really got me. That, you know, if we, I know one person, we've been working on a trailer for 10 years or five years, but actually longer before we got the business. She owned that property.
What's your, if you don't mind me asking, what's your business?
Wheelhouse RV and floral.
Wheelhouse RV and floral, so you do RV repair?
We do some repairs.
Lee's, was Lee's RV?
Lee's RV.
It used to be Lee Williams.
By the Dairy Queen.
By the Dairy Queen.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay, so we bought that building and we were gonna just do the flower shop and found out that, you know, it's 130 miles to go and get parts. And my husband and I are both mail-riders, so we figured we could do the work.
And so, we're working on RVs and stuff, right? I, you know, I, if the county court would like, if it's okay to talk and just be freely, so.
Discussion, yeah.
Yeah. There are, when it comes to RV use as recreational vehicles, right? I'm not going to wax poetic on concepts or anything like that. But there are, there are some fairly strict provisions that relate to how they can be utilized throughout the state as far as permanent structures. And from what I've gathered, it's because RVs are built to a certain degree to be recreational vehicles, not permanent housing. And so, that's what kind of the rubber needs to grow as far as the use of them goes in a long-term sense. So, you'll find there are provisions for temporary use for folks to reside in them when need be, you know? There is a county, Unitilla County also has, I know one paper in Unitilla County. Unitilla County also provides for temporary hardships of RVs to be used after a natural disaster. I think that's a potentially important inclusion that we should consider as well, given forest fire situations. Would we probably work with folks in those scenarios in a pinch? Absolutely, why wouldn't we? You know, like your house just burned down. If you need to, while you're rebuilding it, let's allow that to happen. If this is a private property issue, we have a bigger discussion to have. If it's a housing issue, there are, you know, this is just me talking, but there are allowances for RV parks. Those prices are controlled by capitalist early markets. So, if you, if somebody needs, if somebody's got a non-farm dwelling, an existing home, their home is permitted and can have accessory uses to the home. You want to park your RV out there, go for it, awesome. Nobody's telling you can't do that. If you want to have your kids in there every once in a while, cool and great. It's your RV, you know? An RV in the middle of a field in EFU land is different. And that's, at least it's different in the eyes of our zoning laws.
Okay.
I have to speak potentially on the effects that it would have on the county if this type of housing activity were permitted, which I'm not seeing that there's an avenue for it really within the state statute even that would allow us to. But if it were, you end up with blighted areas, much like what you see when you're driving in Christmas Valley to the store there. And a lot of those are older mobile homes and RVs and whatnot on the sides of the road. But then you also end up with somebody who maybe has a five-acre lot and goes out, puts their fifth wheel on it, and then the fifth wheel gets deteriorated to the point where it's not maintained and it's run down, and then they walk away and abandon it. And then it ends up becoming the county's through a tax foreclosure, and then we have a liability and a financial issue of how to dispose of that RV and get the property back on the market, on the tax rolls again. So, there is an ultimate end potential liability to the county on these types of issues as well. I think, and I don't know, I mean, if it were ever permitted somehow or another or changed in the laws that would allow for this kind of, you know, on a piece of private property to do that, I would think we'd have to come up with some kind of a bonding in order that if a person did default and abandoned that property, that there's a bond that we could go after to use to clean up the lot. But it's gotta get changed, I think, in legislation before we're ever gonna get to that point even.
So, so Harney County doesn't have the flexibility in land use within the county or?
It'd be more stringent for the state, we can't be more relaxed than this state.
Really?
With any, with anything.
Is that the LCDC again?
No, that's, that's whatever it is there is. It's a general rule of thumb.
States can't be less restrictive than federal laws and local governments can't be less restrictive than state laws. States, states can't be less restrictive than federal laws and local governments can't be less, less restrictive than state laws.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Brandon, I have that issue of. RV vehicle parked on eighty private acres at CFU. It was done in nineteen, I mean, twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, that was moved there because of your son. They have a residence while he was working for the market fund. And then he has left the area, nobody lives there and it was deteriorating. And it's also, there's people showing up there that aren't the owners. I don't believe in their lives. They're. What's left of their mobile home or travel trailers being used. And that being moved, I don't care about the ground.
Well, so, um, and you know, I've had this conversation, uh, but, uh. Again, our, our zoning ordinance. Talks about RVs as far as what they're defined as and whether or not they can be. Lived in. If somebody parks their vehicle. Which an RV is a vehicle, somebody parks their vehicle in the middle of their field and walks away from it, there isn't anything in our zoning code that prohibits that. And that's essentially what we're talking about. If somebody were living in there. That would be different. And that's where we, they, we, someone would, like a neighbor, would, would say, hey, it's been X amount of time. You know, what's next? And that's where we would respond to it. You know, when, uh, not to jump out of your context a little bit, but when it came to the, the equity of when these letters go out and if I'm picking on somebody, I don't. I don't care who I'm sending the letter to, it's, it's. It's a one man shop in the largest land area of the entire state, so. We, I operate on a complaint-driven process. If I see something out there that I'm, that I can tell, it's been living in for a while, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm probably gonna send a letter if it's right off the highway. Or I see it every day and it's evident to me, you know, um, otherwise. I don't have the resources in my department to tackle twenty or thirty of these. In here, which is most likely where you're looking at. That's a guess. But it could be more.
We have a provision of safe lands, which is like on the other border. This guy's in the middle, he uses the state's land for access and he goes and they have. Trying to do the balancing act of, does he have to pay for improvements of the road he leaves, leaves open? Is there any responsibility for any? Damage on their land?
Yeah.
And he's right next to mine, but I also will just tell you, the planning department doesn't have any teeth.
Well, the nuisance abatement ordinance, which is the nuisance abatement ordinance.
Okay.
Is the sheriff's department's department. Which is not planning department's department. And that's where the teeth of any former fashion at the county level comes into play.
So that's where I filed a complaint about this. Thinking of abandonment.
Well, you'd have to work with them to find what part of the nuisance ordinance it would be under. And they'd have to work it forward from there.
The, uh, the old nuisance abatement ordinance, I, I'm not as familiar with the new one, but the old one did discuss or speak to abandoned vehicles. I'm not sure if the new one does specifically look at that. I would imagine it's probably. I did.
It's, it's. RVs are registered through DMV, aren't they?
Correct.
And they're considered, they're not considered, um. They're personal property, not, not real property.
Right.
So. Um, so having that status, it's the same as a vehicle.
Started between you two together.
Yeah. I'm looking at our, uh, nuisance ordinance right now. But I knew it was gonna cross over with this.
Brandon, when you said ADUs are not defined in Hardy County Code, is that something you think needs to be defined and if so, why?
I think eventually we need to discuss it. I'm not sure if it's. ADUs are, uh, at a statewide level. I wouldn't say more of a concern from their populous areas, but that's where the emphasis and the requirements are right now. Because that's where the population development pressure is. And so, uh, it's one of the reasons you have larger minimum lot sizes for rural residential lands in counties. Is that you want eventually, uh, especially those, those rural residential lands within a UGB will be. Brought into city limits at some point in the future. Gradually moving the city limit boundaries out where you can account for infrastructure needs in an adequate way for capital. And so that is difficult to do if your lots are so small that you can't have. Multiple divisions from them. Long story short, I, I think we do eventually need to address it. Um, a lot of counties, like say Malheur County even, but, uh, Lake County, Grant County, it's not on the radar yet. Is it something that's been discussed? Sure, but usually just amongst planners as the development pressure isn't quite there. There are other opportunities to, to look at. Uh. And I'm speaking to the choir here as the commissioner who's leading many efforts on housing, but, you know, um. The land isn't the, isn't necessarily the short term, it's the infrastructure. And if, um, if. If infrastructure were addressed in a, in a way that, and there are efforts on this to do this. Um, in our own community right now, um, if infrastructure were addressed in a way that. ADUs could positively impact the opportunities for additional housing. Then yes, but I, I think, uh, it is my, of my opinion at this moment that if infrastructure were built, say. Along B Street. Uh, you have it lands there that could be developed for single-family dwellings. And the, the idea that ADUs, uh, ADUs don't even come into the equation yet. We need, uh, single-family dwellings for workhouse, workforce, uh, population. As you well know, are where we need to go. And ADUs are, are part of the overall housing equation. I'm just not sure if it, it should be at the top of the list right now. Should it be a part of any housing discussion? For sure. Should we define it? Maybe.
Does the county need to post any signage around the county that four warrants people are about? Not for training, whatever the rules are. So they have some place to live rather than they're catching on unprepared, they come out and buy a piece of property and they. Put a travel trailer on it and then they maybe or maybe not never come back.
Like a sign that says you can't live in RVs?
And why I think you could.
I'm not sure if that's going to.
But check your local planning department for any restrictions.
I would have shot down with a shotgun, you know.
Most state statutes in Oregon, um, are. It's a responsibility of the individual to know and to research. Um, it's, it's the individual's responsibility to understand and know the legal operation of a motor vehicle. It's the, it's the individual's responsibility to know and understand. What constitutes a crime and what doesn't. Um, it's not the, it's not the jurisdiction or the government's ended, uh, responsibility to put signs out that say, know this and know that. Yeah, the, the, the saying goes from my days of law enforcement is ignorance is no defense to the law.
Well, you seem to have a number of people who are ignorant.
Yeah, but it's, it's the, the individual's responsibility to research what they can do and what they can't do with that piece of five acres or whatever.
Maybe the realtor honor included in his documents or the title of the thing?
Um.
Very easy for people who come.
Yeah, but that's.
That come in and get caught in this catch twenty-two.
Um, that's the due diligence though of the, of the purchaser. I mean, I'm, I would like to buy some land here, there somewhere and it's gonna be upon me. To make sure with whatever county that it's in as to what the, what the, what the zoning is, can I build on it? Can I put septic on it? Can I put, drill a well? Can I have power run to it? Uh, access rights to it, that, those are all things that's incumbent upon me as the purchaser to find out, not to buy it and then find out later on and say, oh, well, I didn't know that when I bought it. That's. Yeah, and I know people do it all the time.
I'm sure it's a common argument.
Yeah, they buy property all the time. Well, I didn't know I couldn't do that. Well, you should have done your homework before you bought it. And that's really where the onus lies, is on the purchaser and the owner.
Maybe they're selling it when it's back and it's all said and done.
Yep. So I see, I'm looking still. This ordinance is a little lengthy, but it does have a definition for abandoned vehicle. Means any vehicle which reasonably appears to be inoperative, wrecked, discarded, abandoned. Or totally or partially dismantled, including but not limited to RVs, travel trailers, pickup campers. Uh, or canopies, manufactured homes, boats, ATVs and riding lawn mowers. Um, but I haven't found yet where that abandoned vehicle. Comes into the, I'm still reading, where it comes into the, uh, to the prohibited act, so to speak.
So there may not be worth it. But. Uh, maybe there's a call out, which it seems like it's indicated in our nuisance abatement ordinance, so. If that fits the bill.
Can I ask another question? So with the way things are and the way I now understand what they didn't before. And with the amount of RV dwellings I am aware of personally. Is, you're not gonna pursue without a complaint? Is that what I'm hearing? I mean, that's kind of what you do because of limited personnel.
Yeah, you're teeing up something, but go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, what, where do you go from here, I guess? I feel like maybe I stepped in something. And, you know, I don't wanna see my friends. Get, or these people I know. A fallout of a, you know, suffer from a question I asked or.
So, um, I can tell you that again, it is truly complaint driven or something I see, and so. I'm not gonna go down to the office immediately and find out who everyone you know and send you out letters. It, that, that is.
Much you wanna provide him a list of.
No, I won't do that, but.
Yeah, it, it's not in my best interest professionally to do something.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, you know, cause I did, I, I left feeling a little like. Oh man, did I open a can of worms and, you know, cause that wasn't my intent at all.
Cheryl, none of this stuff is personal. It's, it's, it's just the job, it's the work. And it's important to the community, uh, to some degree that it gets done, uh, and so I take that seriously, but professionally.
And, and we're, you know, I, I will say because of these discussions and what I found out, you know, it gives me a different perspective. When I'm dealing with my customer base, you know? Um. Uh, because it's.
Maybe Cheryl wants to post that sign at her place.
I don't mean.
Just be one of their best assists.
But, you know, I mean, I know, like I said, because of what the nature of the business and what we, part of what we do. You know, we, we know people, they have no other choices and they've been there so long now that. It would be devastating to kick them out. You know, so I'm just, I'm a little more comfortable that you're saying complaint trick. You know, cause I, you know, they're making nice looking, you know, it, it's an RV, but it's. Taken care of and, and you know, there's a nice yard and all this stuff that goes with it. So, anyway. My first bid data was LCDC, so.
You'll get them.
Yeah.
I didn't make it very far with them.
Sometimes they have opportunities to join the commission, so.
I'm gonna have to do a word search on this. In the ordinance, it's defined an abandoned vehicle, but I don't see where they've used that term in the ordinance. So I'll have to do a word search on it, find out exactly how they implied it.
That is a lengthy ordinance. I remember trying to read it.
Oh, and Dominic might recall some of that. And some of that was because Jesse needed some of those changes.
It's most, it, it is for sure needed. It's an evil necessity, but it is, it is what it is. The, the original nuisance abatement ordinance from the early nineties was like. Six papers or something and hardly acted on, um.
But, you know, it's like law enforcement, say, they say, if, if there's a complaint, but there's no rule against. Against whatever it is we've been called to address with people. Then how can we even do that? And so. The ordinance for nuisance abatement grew to cover a lot of things today, to include like overgrown vegetation and. You know, certain rural areas that, you know. Could invade from your property to the next guy's and, you know, stuff like that that needs to be. Technically, they should be taken care of and if there were complaints. You know, they could tell that part.
Is there anything that you put, you put in the county's website?
About what?
About this catch twenty-two of, of not catching a restriction and already purchased the property and I don't know what to do.
I just think it ought to be brought up somewhere, not just a fire beware. Well, when people get their permits and things like that at the planning department. I would think that would be the best time for education or information. If need be, that's just my.
So when people are in Hardy County and they're looking at coming here and checking out options. Something on the website would give them a heads up to in fire.
Well, I mean, that could be for any county, right?
White County is for Hardy County.
I don't know. Have you seen it for any other county, anything written like that? I, I don't know, I don't, it's like. I feel like people need to do their due diligence and understand what they're getting into and what they're about to embark on.
Well, I, I really don't. And I fought with an access situation that was. Unbelievably stupid, but it didn't show up on anything. Turns out it is a utility right of way, so they can't take my access away.
I've, and I've been stunned by the, I will admit, I've been stunned by the exact same thing wherein I bought a property in the past. That had, um, the realtor basically gave me bad information because the power lines were right there, you could see them.
Yeah.
But I didn't realize that there was a utility access corridor that I couldn't fit off. So what I thought was gonna be my entire backyard was really a street, a road.
Right.
Whenever they might need to get access. So I, I've been, I've been stunned there too and I, and I, I learned that lesson.
Well, mine's a little different and I'll just explain it shortly. Old Highway seventy-eight before it was straightened into a better road and eventually the highway that is now. The road that traveled went right in front of the entrance gate of our property. And then when seventy-eight was put in, they moved it. Fifteen hundred feet further away and straightened it out. But nobody ever. Ever basically reported extending our driveway to have a legal access. And it didn't show up on anything until the lady who was next door said, you own my property. And I'm trying to figure out what the hell's going on. And so I basically just said, okay, sue me, it's a utility right of way. If you tell old tech and the telephone company they can't have their lines there, then I guess I'll do something, but not until. But it can happen. I mean, just one little thing, access.
Yeah.
Because I did have it legally before and then when the highway came in and why they did, highway department didn't do anything, I'm not even sure they're supposed to. But it left the property with a, this catch twenty-two, I'm not accessing.
So the little sliver or piece between your property line and the highway belonged to somebody else?
It's easier to easily see if it's, if you see the map.
Yeah, I can picture it. I know what you're, but. That's, that's, that's a tough one. That's a. Um. Anything else? I mean, it's. I, I don't know if we, I guess, I guess the next question would be. What can we do within the state statutes? Is there anything we can do along this question? And the way I'm reading it, I mean, unless I'm not, no, I don't know all the bits and pieces, but from what you provided and what I'm reading, I'm seeing that there is nothing.
Uh, you're, the county is limited in scope as to where you could utilize. RVs as homes. With the exception of the new Senate bill that was put into play under state statute and it's in that report. If there was. If there was. If the county court felt the desire to move in a direction to provide for housing in a more permanent sense, given the nature of that state statute. The county could pursue that pack. It would require a, a zoning code amendment to provide for that uh use within our R-one zones. Uh I would imagine more deliberation of discussion as to how that could be applied and, and in which neighborhoods, maybe that would make more sense or less sense. Um as our, our rural residential zones. All out certain neighborhoods. Um certain portions of our, of our R-one zones are closer to town and they take on the characteristics of their respective. Jurisdictions such as Burns and Hines. Um and some don't, some are more rural like Radar Lane or Secratch up here. Or I talked about Jay Wynn, so there are variables there. I, I would imagine the question before the county court that was, is our RVs. Are recreational vehicles a viable long-term solution to housing scenarios? And if they aren't, are they a temporary one? And if that's the case, then you have solutions for that, given code. You know, is it a hardship? Are you building a home? Is this a scenario where. There are designated areas for RVs that you could live in temporarily and there are, there are some in town. So I, I'm not sure what, uh what the desire of the county goal would be in that, in that scenario, but there is an avenue on. A very limited amount of land that the county has jurisdiction over to potentially afford for that under the scope of that new statute provision.
The only, the only thing I'm really seeing that we could, that we could amend to add from the statute. Is it says a county may allow an owner of a lot or parcel in a rural area to cite. On the property, one recreational vehicle that is used for residential purposes and is subject to residential rental agreement, provided. The property is not within the. Um not within an area designated as an urban reserve. Uh provided a single family dwelling that is occupied as the primary residence of the property owner is cited on the property. So there's already a, a cited residential property there. There are no other dwelling units on the property and no portion of the sing, single family dwelling is rented as a residential tenancy. The property owner will not allow the use of the recreational vehicle space or recreational vehicle for vacation occupancy as defined in. So it's not gonna be an Airbnb. Recreational vehicle is owned or leased by the tenant. The property owner will provide essential services to the recreational vehicle space as described. So they're gonna have to tap into the existing water, sewer, electricity.
County would need to find those are there as well.
Yeah.
So the, when you, when, not to interrupt Judge, but when you walk through those provisions, those are what are necessary when you're looking at a rural residential subdivision. Generally speaking, it's bare bone stuff. The county planning department does not. Need or account for residential agreements like tenant agreements or rental agreements. It's a whole new category that would be introduced into uh zoning provisions and zoning code. I'm, I'm actually surprised that it's in there, to be honest with you, that the county would need to account for that in a zoning program. It's not typically something that is under our purview unless it's a private matter. The reason it's in there presumably is that you're trying to make these permanent scenarios. And so you wanna account for the, the livelihood of someone who's staying in a RV on somebody's property. Um and so that's. That's why you have those new provisions that would be in there, that, that finding department would have to account for. You'd need to start tracking things. Okay, where's your rental agreement? Is it still in place? Do you have a new tenant? Do we need, do we need a new copy of your rental agreement? How are your, how's your infrastructure going? Do you have adequate connections to your, to the septic system, to the, whatever provisions we allow? So would it take more work? Absolutely. Um the question is, is it worth it and is it needed? That's the question.
Yeah, and it, it goes on that a county may require those things. But if you start to get into those weeds and start requiring those things, the tenant agreement and, and register, it says register the use with the county. I mean, you're really, you're really getting into the, into the thick of it and I. It's not on my. Calendar. It's not on my to-do list. But with what it's saying, I think the only thing we really could amend is that one small thing allowing that kind of activity. Is really the only thing we could amend in our existing ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, you could enable and up portions of not all of that particular statute in our R-one itself. I would suggest that we really consider which neighborhoods that would be applicable to. What types of areas that would make the most sense in, in the infrastructure lot size. And characteristics. I mean, our, our R-one neighborhoods vary drastically. The, the R-one zones on Radar Lane are significantly different than. Than spots where this is, this is a problem right now. Near earns, say for instance. And I have to send out the nasty man to, you know?
And you tell me what supervision you're looking in.
The statute?
Yeah, the statute.
It's uh chapter two ninety-five, ORS, chapter two ninety-five, section two. Section two-two. And it's, and it's directly from Senate Bill ten thirteen. Does the exact same language in Senate Bill ten thirteen. It was just codified in the, in the state statute.
Yes, I can make one final comment. If the city of Burns and Hines are planning on developing a hundred and eighty lots, three hundred and some lots are potentially up here. You're gonna have a, a large number of people coming in, not just to buy a home, but to move to Harney County as it grows. So I think it's important, even if you only put it on a sign, only put it on the. Entering Henneck, Harney County, leaving Harney County. I think there's about four directions you got to put it. That planning department guidelines strictly enforced, just to give them a heads up. That they don't fall into a trap.
Worth consideration. Um yeah, I. You know, it's, it's kinda like um. Again, when you sign for your driver's license, you're acknowledging that you understand the laws of motor vehicle travel and everything. And it's your responsibility to look that up, but even if there's a sign at the end of the town, edge of town that says planning, building. Code enforcement strictly enforced, still incumbent upon that individual to go.
Check it out.
Yeah.
But it's a, it's a, a week, a head, uh it gives them a heads up.
A potential deterrent.
Yeah.
Save them from making a very expensive mistake if their plans don't fit. Cuz we're not talking about buying a driver's license.
I like the signs that say welcome to Harney County. Those are the signs I like.
If you don't want your job to be difficult to, need to.
Well, I, I just wanna make a comment on that since you understand that. When you move here and you're gonna do something with your property that you just bought here. The avenues to find out what you're allowed to do with that property are available. Within, you know, an eight to five or whatever you were, you know, I mean. It, it's never been a problem in my experience to call and ask, whether it's the Harney County Court or. You know, the planning event now or whatever, you know, and I would think that's part of the responsibility of that person wanting to move here. Is to find out what's okay and what's not. But you know.
I, I do think, I do think people view. Um eastern Oregon counties as the wild frontier and I'm gonna go buy this piece of property and do whatever I want on it. You know, I, there is that, that mentality out there.
Yeah, with frontier rural is what they don't understand.
Yeah.
You know, uh in that vein, and then I'll, I, I don't have much else, but um. When I talk to planning planners in my circles, um colleagues from other jurisdictions that are, are maybe even more popular in there. We talk about the, the challenges we have in, in utilizing being the administrators, if you will, of our zoning ordinances and compliance of plans. We talk about the practices of, of compliance and. Where the lack thereof and, and what some of the more uh. Bigger hills to climb are. And all that to say, you know, when, when I compare what. How we get something done here to say that of. Another county closer to say the Portland metro area. Um it is substantially different in process and. What, what folks experience developing their property in the way that. That makes sense for the community development standards, what this community wants. So if somebody wanted to build a home on twenty acres somewhere and they had their zoning lined up. In our community, that can happen like that. We have it all in one building. We have your zoning, building and onsite. It's everything you need to get through it. There are no lines. And there really are no provisions as far as where you can put your home. You wanna put a smack dab in the middle of there? Most likely you're gonna be okay. If you go somewhere else, it's gonna be a vast delay. And I wanna keep it that way. I wanna keep things simple. But we do have some core fundamental values that go into what we want our community to look like, feel like. And that's what this is about. I've always felt that way. And I'll promote them messages as long as I'm sitting in the chair that I'm sitting in, but there are vast differences when you go to other communities in the state. And I'll always move back to that.
I agree with what you said and I, I remember when I first moved to Harney County and. I, I went to a county court meeting just to kinda listen and. I would just love the fact that all the comment was whatever somebody. Had on their mind, you know, and it wasn't really screened and I mean, obviously you're not gonna go into it if it's, you know, but. I, I really liked that and it's still that way and we're fortunate to be able to have it that way.
So any other discussion, any other questions?
No, just like, was this helpful at all? I mean, the discussion and we're not like taking an action per se, but we're all more educated on.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I think, like I said, you know, having the business I have. This was important to me, you know, cuz I don't wanna go out and skirt an RV again on a piece of property and set him up for personal, you know. You, you know, I mean, there were circumstances that maybe it would have fit, but we certainly didn't know the right problem. Because it was a hardship thing, so. But you know, now I am more informed and I appreciate it very much that you guys took their time.
Well, thank you.
Not seeing or hearing any other, any other discussion, uh we shall stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
See you at the buck tonight.
Yeah, I'll be.